Well, good evening everyone and happy Wednesday to you. Welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary where the whole household of God is welcomed and wanted. We are an inclusive spiritual community that knows God is bigger than religion, bigger than sexual orientation, bigger than gender, bigger than country of origin. All of these temporary designations, segregations and separations really breed violence in the human family. It begins not with violence, it begins with otherness, difference. Then it begins to turn into caste and hierarchical thinking. Eventually, violence is justified. And so, we don't pray for peace, we be peace, we become peace. And so, that is our task, that is our mission, is to model the Kingdom of God on earth as it is in heaven, in manifestation as it is in imagination. And so, we're glad you're here tonight. We're gonna begin tonight, well, once again, Eckhart Tolle's A New Earth. I believe tonight is week 61, I could be wrong about that. We're not sure if it's week 60 or 61. It doesn't really matter all that much, but we're glad you're here. We're gonna have an awesome discussion tonight. We're gonna begin with our Fully Awake devotional. This is Fully Awake 365. And so proud of this, I think it's a tool for awakening that helps us to maintain a high vibration of love and peace and joy. Today is October the 4th and this, I have to admit, theologically, this is one of my favorite devotions because it really calls into question our paradigm of the nature of Jesus and in its disparate assumptions being different from God. How different are they? And how do we apply that into our spiritual practice? So, October 4th, we're in the month of no fear, this is Halloween. I love to be scared, I love scary movies, but there is no fear in perfect love. We're gonna talk this evening about being saved from God by Jesus. Does Jesus save us from God? Interesting question. Let's talk about healthy religion tonight. Here's our affirmation. "Today I will be aware that I am not saved from God by Jesus. I am reconnected to God in consciousness through Jesus. God is at peace with me and I am at peace with God." Many of us grew up being saved, but we didn't really feel safe. And so, that begs the question, safe from what? Safe from ourselves, possibly, in a higher minded conversation? But in the elementary way of thinking, saved from God. Are we safe with God or are we saved from God? Or both, or what is the difference in those things? I felt like my salvation was always in question and so I got saved every single Sunday night just in case. I don't get saved on Sunday nights anymore because we don't have Sunday night service. Ain't that a blessing? You can stay home with your family. But I would go to school on Monday and see a cute girl or have some sort of, what I was perceived as impure thoughts and all of a sudden get guilty again or feel some sort of way that my salvation was in jeopardy. "As I grew in knowledge," listen to this, "I began to understand that the primary connection with God is not merely to achieve or keep salvation or to make it into heaven, but rather to find peace of mind. I also began to accept the idea that Jesus was not different from the Father, but rather came to show us the Father. The disciples, like many of us, struggled to make the connection that Jesus was the expression or the incarnation of God. It's okay if you struggle with the incarnation, I struggle at times. So, they asked Jesus to show them the Father. Jesus answered them, "Have I been with you so long and yet you have not known me, Philip? He who has seen me has seen the Father. How can you say, 'Show us the Father?'" And so, that's a lot of dispelling and deconstructing of Christian fears that Jesus saves us from God. Really, what Jesus saves us from is fear and saves us from ourselves and from all of these constructs of religion that have very little to do with the nature and character of the ultimate reality in the universe that we choose to call God. Alright, let's grab our prayer at the very end together. "In incarnate God, today I am saved, safe and sane. As I settle into knowing that I am not separate from your love, amen." So it is. Looking forward to joining you again on Friday morning with our morning of devotion. We always have a good time together and so glad that you joined us for that.
I'm pushing our dog out of the way, she just messed up the camera.
Our dog is lying upon the tripod of the camera. And so, she's stretching out under the table, she has bumped the camera, so sorry about that. Alright, we're gonna jump in tonight to our teaching with Eckhart Tolle's A New Earth. Tonight's lesson or discussion is called "Allowing the Diminishment of the Ego." Just a quick review, we are thinking about things like forms, physical forms, thought forms, not being something that defines us, but something we are aware of, but not necessarily limited to or constrained by or married to eternally. We are not our physical forms, we're not our gender, our race, our even geographical connections. Furthermore, we are not our thought forms. We are not the beliefs that we think we have, we are not our opinions, we are not our biases or prejudices, prejudging is where that word comes from. Yeah, we are the spirits capable of experiencing physical form and also we are spirits capable of experiencing thought forms, but we're not any specific thought. We are the observer of our thoughts. That's a different plane of consciousness that allows us to be loyal to our spiritual development without becoming loyal to a specific way of thinking, to allow the Holy Spirit full agency in our lives. We've also talked about the beautiful gift of humanity to be able to recognize our own dysfunction, which serves as the groundwork of functionality. If we can be cognizant of our insanity, then we can begin planting seeds of sanity. And so, the only question that really matters in our life is, is it working for you? And if it's not working, we can't keep doing the same thing over and over, thinking the same thoughts over and over again, hoping for a different result. The last thing that we've talked about almost every week in its ubiquity is that our present level of consciousness is not necessarily synonymous or equal to our eternal capacity. What does that mean? Wherever we are in consciousness, awakening to self, to soul, to God, to the world around us, that is not our final resting place. Our present consciousness is not our eternal capacity. That's a lot to think about. We've grown, you've grown, others will grow. And so, the same grace that we desire to grow out of certain lower levels of thought form, we have to be conscious to offer that grace to others. They are not eternally going to be homophobic. Their forever mental capacity is not to be religophobic or racist or misogynistic or xenophobic. It's just where they're stuck right now. What they think is not who they are. They are just as capable of awakening as we are and as we are awakening together. And so, good things to keep in mind. Last week, we talked, we asked some discussion questions. How can we approach our careers and callings without allowing them to become a means to an end? In other words, I just do this to make money or to get affirmation or achieve some notoriety or success? How do we keep our careers and callings from becoming a means to an end? Number two, can we surrender to what is without becoming apathetic? Can we accept the present moment as it is without saying, "It is what it is"? No, "it is as it is" is very different from "it is what it is." "It is as it is" means I'm not in denial. I embrace that this is the present moment. I am open to learning whatever it is here to teach me and I know that in some ways I can play a part in co-creating a different existence for myself. And so, those are a little bit different ideas. Alright, tonight's questions. Question number one, I love these questions. "How do you respond when your mental form of me is threatened?" How do we respond when our mental form of me is threatened? We'll talk about unpacking what is that mental form of me. Question number two, are personal attacks, and it might be more accurate to say are impersonal attacks because nothing really is ever personal, are these attacks camouflaged as calls to come up higher? Are they a precipice, are they a catalyst? Are they ignition some way in calling us up higher if we don't get caught into the game of offense and the mechanisms of defensiveness? Interesting question. Number three, can you deliver a high quality "no" without becoming reactionary or defensive? Can you say "no" from a place of higher mindedness without becoming reactionary or defensive? Alright, week 60 or 61, who knows? "Allowing the Diminishment of the Ego." Let's jump in tonight. The ego is always on guard against any kind of perceived diminishment. So, and let's give a little bit of definition to the ego.
You mind moving her?
I think we're gonna have to move our dog.
I wish y'all could see her. She's laying on top.
Good girl, okay, that's good. Stay right there, that's okay, stay right there. Alright, sorry to just start to disrupt your nap this evening, Lolo. So, as we begin to unpack this question, what is the ego? I don't know that we have a specific definition of ego. What we do have is some working definitions of ego. The late Dr. Wayne Dyer would offer to us that the ego tries to convince us to believe that we are what we have. They could be both physical possessions or mental possessions, okay? The rich young ruler both had physical possessions and mental possession. Possession is not just material, sometimes it's mental, spiritual, religious indoctrinations, okay? You can be very wealthy in your mental possessions. Meekness does not mean lowliness in any way, it just means you've emptied yourself. Blessed are the meek. When Jesus says, he's not saying blessed are the falsely humble. He's saying blessed are those who can empty out, who can practice the Buddhist beginner's mind. That's really what Jesus is saying. So, in that way, Dr. Dyer tells us we are not what we have, we are not what we do and we are not what others think of us. So, the ego is always on guard against any kind of perceived diminishment. Don't diminish what I have, what I've accomplished, my mental or physical possessions. Don't diminish my reputation in any way. I need to be important, I need to be affirmed in my importance. I need other people to think a certain way about me, okay? When that gets threatened, what do we do? What does the ego do when it's threatened? Automatic ego repair mechanisms come into effect to restore the mental form of me, all that that we just talked about. When someone blames or criticizes me, that to the ego is a diminishment of self and it will immediately attempt to repair its diminished sense of self through self justification, defense or blaming. We all do that in some ways. Whether the other person is right or wrong is irrelevant to the ego. How peculiar is that? The ego doesn't care if somebody's right what they're saying about you or wrong. It just enjoys the defense mechanism being aroused. It is much more interested in self preservation than in the truth. Woo, that's really good there. I think all of us can learn from that. This is the preservation of the psychological form of me. Even such a normal thing as shouting back, shouting something back when another driver calls you idiot is an automatic and unconscious ego repair mechanism. One of the most common of these is anger, which causes temporary but huge ego inflation. All repair mechanisms make perfect sense to the ego, but are actually dysfunctional. Those that are most extreme in their dysfunction are physical violence, self-delusion in the form of grandiose fantasies. I do like all of those right there. Aren't those all interconnected with each other? Both physical violence, violence being diluted about who you really are, what you really think and creating in your life? And even some grandiose fantasies of future plans or projections that aren't really in the reality of what you're creating in your life. Very interesting deconstruction there of the ego. A powerful spiritual practice is consciously allowing the diminishment of ego when it happens without attempting to restore it. Listen to that. A powerful spiritual practice, meaning it's not a one-time thing. It may be something that we do regularly. It's consciously allowing your ego to be diminished without attempting to restore it with defense or with giving your side or this is my perspective or you don't understand the way I see things or, yeah, all that is kind of the ego's way of not wanting to be diminished. So, we see in the life of Jesus of Nazareth several years of recorded history of oral tradition, really is what it is, of him defending himself, him giving answers to the Pharisees, him basically going back at them and kind of tearing them a new one. You know, they brought the ignorance and he was like, alright, let me show you how really ignorant you are. That, at some point, that did end for him and he ascended into a higher space where, when he arrived with Pilate of the province that Pilate was governor of, Pilate questioned him as well and Jesus almost didn't answer anything. He just kinda sat there like, "It is kinda what you say, that's fine. You know, my kingdom's not of this world and so, I don't necessarily have a cause to answer you." And Pilate was very frustrated. He said, "I have your, I hold your life in my hands and Jesus says you don't have anything. My understanding of life is so much bigger than what you think you hold in your hand as a government leader." That was, his ego was not being, was being diminished and Jesus said, "It's time for it to be diminished. I don't need to answer you, I have no cause to answer you in these things." I recommend, or Tolle does, that you experience with this from time to time. For example, when someone criticizes you or blames you or calls you names, instead of immediately retaliating or defending yourself, do nothing. Allow the self-image to remain diminished and become alert to what feels like deep inside you or to what it feels like deep inside you. For a few seconds, it may feel uncomfortable as if you had shrunk in size. I think that's pretty accurate. Then, you may sense an inner spaciousness that feels intensely alive. You haven't been diminished at all. In fact, you have expanded. You may then come to an amazing realization. When you are seemingly diminished in some way and remain absolute non-reaction, in absolute non-reaction, not just externally, but also internally, you realize that nothing real has been diminished, that through becoming less, you actually become more. Woo! He's all over the Jesus teaching right here, isn't Tolle? That "The greatest among you shall serve." If you want to really be in the Kingdom, you need to become like a child. If you want to be first, Jesus teaches, be last. If you want to be recognized and if you want to be so important, you need to learn how to be a servant or Jesus said, "You need to sit in the back, not always be trying to get the best place to sit." Yeah, he said, "All of this is the ego. All this wanting to wear the finest clothes and be recognized in the temple and in the marketplaces as the Pharisees do. There's nothing that preachers love more than to be recognized in public." Yeah, it's, I've been around it my whole life. I am one now and I get recognized occasionally and I have to ask myself, "Is that really all that you think it is?" Yeah, it's at least good to ask the question. And so, Jesus really comes against that and says, "Let the ego go. Be a servant, sit in the back, be last. Don't stop trying to, you know, have this reputation or be so noticed and notarized all the time or notoriety." Alright, that's the upside-down Kingdom. Another aspect of this practice is to refrain from attempting to strengthen the self by showing off, wanting to stand out, be special, make an impression or demand attention. That's a challenge for all of us, isn't it? It may include occasionally refraining from expressing your opinion when everybody is expressing his or hers, I need to apply that, and seeing what that feels like. Yeah, especially when you feel like you have a certain level of gained consciousness, awareness, apologetic, defense, expertise in some ways. It's hard to keep quiet in the presence of ignorance. I really struggle with it. It's something that I need to work on. It's something that I need to learn to just say, "Hmm, I choose not to say anything right now. That's okay, other times you may, that's okay too." When you no longer defend or attempt to strengthen the form of yourself, you step out of identification with form or with mental self-image. Through becoming less, at least in the ego's perception, you in fact undergo an expansion and make room for being, not doing, which involves thinking and defense and apologetic and mechanisms and all that. You allow being to come forward and to walk into manifestation. True power, who you are beyond form, can then shine through in apparently, the apparently weakened form. So, this kind of leads us into one of the questions. What about when you are attacked by people? Are those attacks, are those really personal? Are they impersonal? Are they camouflaged as the universe's way of calling us up higher when we feel attacked by something? Could be possible. This is what Jesus means, here we go, when he says, "Deny yourself or turn the other cheek." Yeah, Moses said, "An eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth." Jesus says, "Love your enemy, turn the other cheek." As Gandhi and Martin King taught us, non-violent resistance comes from the Jesus teaching. This does not mean, of course, that you invite abuse or turn yourself into a victim of unconscious people. So, I love that balance there. Isn't that an interesting balance from Tolle? That he says, you know... That he says, you know, you probably should be aware of your desire to express your opinion, to correct someone, to uh to expose their ignorance. But he said, at the same time, you know, you probably shouldn't make a practice out of exposing yourself to unconscious people. That's not the people we want to be around, that's not the people who bring joy and peace to us. When we have to be around it, there are some times we probably should hold our tongue, other times maybe. It requires to say something, we we know that uh that spirit will lead us to to the wisdom of those moments. However, Toly says, don't spend your life around people like that. Don't keep catering to relationships that are toxic and that don't don't bring you happiness or joy. That's a that's a good middle way, a good balance right there. Uh sometimes a situation may demand that you tell someone to back off in no uncertain terms, but with no egoic defensiveness. That's a challenge, isn't it? And so can I be strong and tell someone to back off without it becoming defensive? But just saying, I'm sorry, that's a boundary for me, respect my space with that. Uh this will be what I call a high quality no. There's question three, uh that is free of all negativity. Uh what looks like weakness uh to the ego is in fact the only true strength. What looks like weakness is in fact the only true strength, powerful. The spiritual truth is diametrically opposed to the values of our contemporary culture and the way it conditions people to behave. What is that conditioning? To defend yourself, to react, uh to prove others wrong. Uh I think all of us, if we're honest, struggle with a part of that. And so you don't make change instantaneously or overnight, but it's in the awareness of that. It's in the awareness of not needing to always engage in something that possibly the ego is diminished and that form of being, that 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 beingness that Eckhart Tolle talks about doesn't, is not born. It's just given space to come forth into presence itself to some degree. And so that's a lot of personal challenge to us tonight, isn't it? I certainly feel challenged uh by the teaching uh that's put out. Let's go back and grab our questions just as a refresher and see if we can have uh share some sacred space and discuss it tonight. Question one, how do you respond when your mental form of me is threatened? My possessions, my mental possessions, my accomplishments, my role playing, my career, my calling, uh my reputation, all those things are the mental form of me. Question number two, are attacks, and I would say either personal and mostly impersonal attacks, camouflaged as calls to come up higher? Can they act as catalysts to bring us up higher than just always responding to someone else's lower vibration, interesting. Question number three, can you deliver a high quality no? Can we say no and say it from a place of strength and awareness without becoming reactionary or defensive? Can we say no without trying to diminish someone else or put someone else in their place? Can we just stand firm and that this is a no for me? And uh not have to uh to project any kind of defensive mechanism onto others as we're saying no to something? That's an, those are some interesting questions, aren't they? Alright, I'm ready to talk, let's talk peoples.
Alright, we'll start with Ms. Pat Hutchinson answered number two, our personal attacks camouflage as calls to come up higher. She said, I think sometimes when you're attacked verbally about something that you said or done, sometimes it's the delivery of the attack that stops you from learning and thinking about what the person is saying to you.
Yeah, it's, that's difficult, isn't it, Pat? It's what's the old saying, you can, you can just about say anything you want if you say it uh consciously. Or scripture might say something like speak the truth in love. Um and I would argue that that there is no truth, it's your, speak your truth in love. And so have to be aware of that as well. But um how do we, how do we deal with it when someone says something to us? Even if there's some truth to it, but they say it in a very harsh or rude way. That's a, that's puts us in a difficult defensive uh posture. But can we be self aware in that moment to not become, not take on a defensive posture, to not be overly reactionary? That's that's a difficult uh difficult to do, Pat, thanks for sharing.
Alright, Ms. Bobby for number one, uh how do you respond when your mental form of me is threatened? She said, sometimes anger sets in and wanting to lash out and feeling aggressive, but flipping the coin, I can choose to vibrate higher.
Yeah, look at that, Bobby, so yeah, so don't, I love it that you painted it that way. Don't beat yourself up for feeling angry. Sometimes the judgment you have of yourself actually strengthens the ego more, because then you get into guilt and shame and unworthiness and all that sense of false humility that really is egoic. We, people think that that's, there's some redemptive nature in false humility, it's actually just ego. False humility is just as much ego as pride. Um but we're gonna be angry, Jesus even said, be angry but sin not, what does that mean? Can I be angered by when someone's ignorance? Yes, but maybe the sin is becoming overly react- uh reactionary to it and just saying, that's their journey, it's their 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 walk, it's not mine. I don't necessarily need to have to say anything about it, and I also don't have to always be in that person's presence. Thanks, Bobby.
For number two, she said, yes, threats are usually not about you, but the person doing the threatening.
Yep, and so uh it might be better for us to rephrase our question, Bobby. Personal attacks to im- impersonal attacks, thanks.
Uh let's see, number three, can you deliver a high quality no? I can deliver a higher no, realizing that I might not know what I want, but I know what I don't want. I will always choose love and peace.
Wow, uh I'll I'll offer something to that, Bobby, thank you. Um I was approached um fifteen years ago, I think, so I was about thirty five um by so- someone in or around our church who was really desperately trying to get me to invest in something that I wasn't interested in. I didn't, I personally didn't think it was a good investment, I didn't want to do it. And I continued to say no, I said, you know, it, I'm not saying no to you as a person. I'm just saying no to this business, this business venture, I don't, I'm not at that place anymore. It doesn't mean that you're not there and that it might hold some value for you, but as for me, this is a no for me. They didn't know how to deal with that, they just kept badgering me and on me and on me. I finally, Bobby, just to get them to leave me alone, invested the minimum amount and said, and this is probably not the right thing to say, I recognize it now, I'm gonna give you this five hundred dollars if you will not ask me about it anymore. I'm not coming to any meetings, I'm not coming to the pyramid schemes, just stop asking me about it. And it really kind of was the end of our relationship. You know, he was, he had had some sense of communication and uh I don't think I've spoken in fifteen years. But um I at first was giving a very high quality no. I appreciate you, I'm so proud that you're ambitious to do this, I think there's a lot for you to learn from it, but it's a no for me. But sometimes people don't understand that, well, if it's a yes for me, it has to be a yes for everyone else. Isn't that interesting, Bobby, that sometimes people want to project their lives and their, the place, the specific place in their journey on you? What if I learned about those type of investments in my twenties and I didn't need to learn that anymore? He just could not embrace that, he could not accept it, and my high high quality no was not received. I probably just said, I should have continued to say no, and I would respectfully like for you to not bring it up again. But I I gave in and I think I probably be- became bitter that he just wouldn't respect my no. Yeah, that's, there's, we do have that agency, Bobby, that we can say no and we can actually invite people to stop asking us things that we've already, things we've already answered as no, don't ask the question again. Thank you, Bobby.
Alright, Richard answered all three, we'll start with number one. When my mental me is threatened, I usually pause, take a deep breath, consider the source and decide whether to respond or not. I usually never immediately respond to a threat. Threats are negative forms of energy that only lead to more negative energy.
Woo, that's a, that's a great piece of wisdom, Richard, yeah, don't, don't respond, let it sit, let it breathe. Think about it for a couple of days, you know, that, don't, don't take the bait. It sounds, it sounds like the wisdom that you're giving, Richard, thank you.
So literally, Richard answered number two exactly like Bobby answered it, and that is, yes, threats are usually not about you, but the person doing the threatening.
Absolutely, good advice, thank you, Richard.
And then for number three about delivering a high quality no, he said, yes, I usually simply say, what part of no do you not understand?
Is 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 there some confusion here? Yeah, there's, I will not, I will not be talked into this, yeah. I I got talked into something and if he's watching tonight, he loves me, I love him, and we actually joke about it now. But I have a close friend who talked to me, kept wanting to get a tattoo. And by this time in my life, I I had had, I already had tattoos. They're meaningful to me, I don't regret them, uh the tattoos I have are, they're beautiful to me because it it paints the journey, my spiritual journey of awakening or or the process of awakening. Some of them are interfaith, some of them are about beginner's mind, um and so I don't regret them. But at that point in my life, I didn't want any more tattoos, I've I've got them, uh my my arm, my shoulders are full of them. And he just could not get in his mind that I didn't want to get a tattoo with him. Kept on, kept on, kept on, so finally I was like, okay, if I get a tattoo, will you stop ask, will you stop badgering me about it? So we go to this place, I get this little tattoo in the back of my neck. He's sitting there and after I get mine, he says, I don't think I'm gonna get mine tonight. And I said, the hell you aren't, I didn't even want to be here. You talked me into this, now you didn't give one? Now to his credit, he did, I think he returned home and got the tattoo that he and I, that he had talked with me about. So I, it's all good, you know, if I'm, if you're on tonight, I love you, it's all good. But so- sometimes we, even people close to us that we cherish, don't understand, it's just not for me. It's not, I don't care to do it, you know, and um whether it's um as we get older, sometimes we don't want to be in loud or crowded places, that's okay. You know, I, my mother and I had to have uh some conversation a couple of months ago and and because she is such a powerful presence uh when you're around her, uh that her suggestions don't come off as suggestions, they come off as commands. Um and she was really saying, people who are watching virtually need to get back in church, get back in these pews. And I said, mom, well, let's let's unpack this together. You know, some people are scared of COVID and they need, they they are, they are choosing to worship from home and to support in that way, and they may have a uh a compromised immune system in some way. I said, but other, some others of our members may be elderly, they're not as comfortable driving as they once were. And that was hard because in my mother's makeup, the way she's, every time the doors are open, you gotta be in that church. And uh that's who she is, that's why we celebrate who she is, and I don't want her to change that, that is what works for her. But we have to also be cognizant not to project what works for us onto others. I love preaching to a church that's full of people, you know, we had a few more people Sunday than usual. There was a different energy, as a preacher, that's great for me, there's more energy. But I also have to be respectful that people do worship in their own way. And if you want to worship virtually, that's okay, that's, those are just a couple of examples. I'm sure there are many times in my life I've projected uh my desires onto other people. Probably every twenty four hours I do it in some ways, and so uh thank you, Bobby. Or was that, or was that Richard?
No, that was Richard. Said, what part of no do you not understand?
There you go, yeah.
Um so Ms. Cheryl commented, and Cheryl, I'm gonna just take a disclaimer here. It's been a while, but I think I remember how to pronounce this. The name of the organization that you're a coach with is Karita or Karit- Karitas or, but it's definitely something like that, so forgive me, do you remember D E? Exactly the the pronunciation.
It's whatever Cheryl says it is.
But as a wonderful, as a wonderful coach, she said, I have learned to cultivate practices to repattern my consciousness toward gratitude, forgiveness, surrendering and compassion when threatened.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. Put, put some of that anointing on me, Ms. Cheryl. Yeah, I don't know if it's testosterone or excuses that I make, I I need to take a breath sometimes. I need to, when I get threatened to say, hmm, okay, this isn't about me, remember what you teach. Uh physician, heal thyself, right Cheryl? And uh thank you for sharing that, yeah, I think that's, that's evident with you, Cheryl, I don't sense you as a very defensive person, thank you.
For number two, she said, personal attacks have allowed me to come up higher, recognizing the interconnectedness of humanity and that hurt people hurt others. Best strategy is to keep your energetic vibrant vibrations elevated.
Hurting people hurt people, isn't that a, just a real, real common sense way of understanding that, Cheryl? Yeah, uh I have two dogs that, one was messing with the camera tonight. But both of my dogs, one of them doesn't have any teeth to bite anymore, she had all of her teeth full, the poor baby. But our other dog is a, is a big dog, and she actually is the type of breed that does police bite work. Like she has a very strong bite. And every day of her life, I reach into her mouth and I give her her medications, and she allows me to do that. She doesn't bite me, she doesn't, she doesn't look at me like, how dare you reach into my mouth? Don't you know I have a full set of teeth that could shred your skin open right now? Of course she could do that if she wanted to, but that's not the way I raised her. I raised her with love, we care for them, they're part of our family. And so if I walked up to a stray dog that had been abused and was living out of people's trash cans or was neglected in some ways, I probably wouldn't reach into their mouth. Yeah, and so I don't care if it's humans, animals, we hurting people hurt other people, that's just how that goes. And if we can step back from that and see it for what it is, Cheryl, maybe it's not always personal, even though it certainly does feel personal, thanks.
For number three, Cheryl commented, I've also learned to deliver compassionate, high quality no. She said, when I made a conscious decision years ago to live in peace and spread joy, I have been labeled as strange.
Walk your walk, girl, yeah, do do what you do, this is your journey. Uh I'll I'll tell a funny story about you and me, Cheryl. We were, you and I were enjoying um an incredible jazz band one night, uh thank you for for treating us to that. Um and I felt in my heart to to pay for the food, because you had already extended some some love and uh uh generosity to us. And you were given a high quality no, pastor, you will not. It was so funny. Um but yeah, I I think that that applies in many areas of our lives. That it doesn't mean that I necessarily have a judgment about what someone else is doing. It's just not something that works for me in this season. Maybe it's something I tried earlier, early on, yeah, it's just, it's not for me right now. And so uh I was raised with um with a lot of things indoctrinated. And I was raised in a pretty progressive Christian environment, I can't imagine what other people go through with extremely strict, dogmatic uh religious environments or even cultural, political environments that that seem to project themselves, that everyone has to do it our way. That is really religion at its core, spirituality is allowing people to navigate their own journey uh and to learn from that creative, that divine creativity within us, that if we are awake at all, uh that's the only teacher that we ever need, and so that's really great observation, thanks, Cheryl.
Alright, I am going to summarize Ms. Lasagna's comment here and story. Um and i- it's, it's really good, though, if we think uh of number three, the question was, can you deliver a high quality no without becoming reactionary or defensive um and and how we relate that to the ego? Essentially, she told a story of needing to be, she said that she's um, she has Captain Savior syndrome. Needing to step in and save, you know, save people essentially and how she was telling a story about how she put herself in a situation by not being able to say no. And ended up, and she, at the end, she said, reflecting on this experience, I've come to understand that my ego's defensiveness or my ego's need to be Captain Savior and identify with that, um not only prevented me from setting clear boundaries, but also put my safety at risk. It was, it was a reminder of the importance of balancing the desire to help others with self care and assertive communication, aligning with the principles discussed in the reading about allowing the diminishment of ego when necessary for the sake of love and compassion.
There, there is so much to talk about there, Ms. Lasagna, wow, what an amazing answer, thank you for that. So let me, let me add just some thoughts, because I don't think, I think it's pretty clear what you, what you gave us there, that we can chew on that. I perceive in my life, when I try to save someone else from what they've created, that it enables, uh it can create codependency, and it really stifles their own growth. It doesn't mean that with a loved one, a cherished friend, someone that spirit brings into your life. If we can help in some way, we should consider that at times, I get that. But when it, when we continue in the savior complex, we stunt other people's growth. And we don't allow them to learn how to navigate their own divine creativity, isn't that true? Um I'll give you an interesting biblical story, uh Lasagna, and that is um in the story of Jonah. Jonah is uh kind of, and I don't believe in things like the will of God anymore. I don't think God has a specific providential will. I think we, we come to grips with that in our own time. I think we, we come to grips with that in our own time. Um but there's this idea that Jonah is destined to go to Nineveh. He flees and go and flees to Tarshish on a, on a, basically a cargo ship. And there's this great tempest, a big storm arises and the sailors, the mariners. Are feeling threatened and they don't know why the gods are, are angry and all that, the weather patterns. And Jonah says, it's me. I'm the one who's been, who's, who's, you know, caused the drama on this ship. And it's an interesting case that the, the, the ship, the people running the ship. Did not wanna put Jonah off of the ship. They, they wanted to save him. They wanted to rescue him out of this situation he had created. For himself. Yeah, and um. But if you follow the story, once Jonah was left to deal with his own. Creation of what had happened in, at what he created in his life. He got to where he was supposed to go. Okay, and the ship that wasn't supposed to save him also got to where they were supposed to go. Sometimes when we take on the Savior complex, we, we damn the ship that we're on. And we doom the people that are on the ship that aren't supposed to be on the ship. And so that's, isn't that a teaching about vibrational attraction? That sometimes we're allowing people on our ships that aren't of the same vibration as us. And the longer we keep them on our ship, the more our ship is threatened. The more that their destined um a- arrival is also threatened as well. And so. It's not our job to save everyone. I see that a lot of people that I come in contact with really struggle with that, always. Trying to save someone or rescue someone out of all these decisions that they've made. They need to learn to navigate their divine creativity. Doesn't mean that we can't encourage. Provide wisdom, an empathetic ear. I was listening to uh Steve Harvey. Couple of years ago and he was talking about the burden of having money. That he had, just has so many cousins and family and play cousins call him all the time. Wanting, wanting a loan, wanting money, wanting him to bail them out of bad decisions that they've made. And he said he's learned. To not respond for two weeks. He won't respond to it for two weeks. And he said almost a hundred percent of the time. That in those two weeks that these people figure out a solution. And he doesn't become their savior. He doesn't become, they don't become codependent or he's not enabling them and, and continual bad behavior. But in that two weeks, he allows them to stew, as the Apostle Paul said, let them stew in their own juices. And figure out how to tap into their divine creativity. Doesn't mean that we're calloused. Uh or uncaring in any way. It just means I can't rescue people my whole life. From the things that they're creating. And as you said, even more um uh more pragmatically, so sometimes it even. Puts us in danger, both financial danger, sometimes even physical danger. And that's just, that's just the wealth of wisdom there. Thank you.
Alright, Miss Mary Hayes shared, when I tell someone no. I start to feel like I was being too harsh, so I have to end the conversation knowing that I would change my mind. And feel bad because I didn't stick to my no. I think I'm too concerned about what the other person thinks.
I say no and then I walk it back. Yeah, isn't that? That's, that's how we are sometimes even as parents, Mary, isn't it? It's, it's hard. It's hard not to. Help someone we love or, you know, get some, bail somebody out of a situation or. It's hard not to compromise a little bit. Yeah, it's. It's okay. You know, that's, that's part of the journey. The awareness, Mary, is the beauty that you brought to us tonight is that. You're aware of your tendency. You're aware of your, of your natural um uh inclination to. Say no and then to talk yourself out of it. Yeah, all that is a process of self-awareness. At least you are aware of the self. It's in that awareness. That positive uh transformation happens. Thanks, Mary.
Alright, uh Miss Terry Johnson commented on number three. She said. Kinda like Richard said, no is a complete sentence. So many times I don't feel like I have to explain why.
No, period. That is, that is a complete sentence in itself. Thanks, Terry.
Alright, and Miss Laverne for number two.
Laverne Bryant?
Oh yeah.
Ah, I've known your face for so many years and she came and talked to me Sunday and so. I know who the musical genius is now. I put a name with the face. Of course, I, I was, you said, uh do you know me? I said, I definitely know your face, but now I know, I will never forget again who Laverne Bryant is. Thanks for coming to talk to me.
Alright, we're gonna have a, a musical war with Laverne. I'm not sure who else. And we've got a couple of gurus around us, but Ladonna. It's on between Ladonna and Laverne. Hilarious. Um alright, Miss Laverne commented for number two. I had a nursing instructor who was always critical of me. Long story shirt, short. She said, Laverne, I know you could be better. I totally understood what she was doing and she was right. I did do better.
Wow, yeah, that's uh, that, that's beautiful to see that without reaction. Uh it's interesting, Laverne, that you shared that story. Uh my daughter and I were, it wasn't yesterday. I think it was maybe Monday. Doesn't matter what day it was, but we were just writing and talking and. We had kinda had a, a bizarre dad-daughter day with a bunch of other distractions, but um she was. Talking about her, her life now, her being in medical school and. Um the things that brought her there. And one of the things Laverne was a very difficult college professor. Who was very hard on her. And demanded the best and wouldn't, wouldn't give her an A and. You know, thought that there was more she should be doing or studying or, or presenting. And it drove Esther crazy, sometimes even in tears. She would come home and say, why is she that way? Why is she so mean to me? And at the end of Esther's um undergraduate degree. This professor offered her a job to work, work with her. She, this professor wrote Esther probably her best recommendation to get into Emory. And Esther sat there two years or a year or so, you, so you know, after that and said. The thing that I thought that was the worst became the best for me. Isn't that a good lesson in not eating of the tree of the knowledge? Of good and evil. Sometimes even what we take as personal may be someone helping, providing help for us. They are catalysts. For us to be our best. Thanks, Laverne.
Yeah, Esther also tells a story of going back. She went to, to the school. Went to that professor's office just to tell her and show her and thank her. And she just walked up and hugged her and just acted like she loved Esther when she was. Her arch-nemesis at one point.
I hate you.
I know. Very sweet. Um alright, Miss Sandra Matt commented on all three. She said, in the past, I would offer an angry response. But I'm moving to a higher form of consciousness moving forward.
I love it. Yeah, look at that growth. We are not our present consciousness, Miss Sandy. We are our eternal capacity. Thanks.
And then for number two, she just simply said yes. And then for number three, she said, yes, I can because I am trying to be true to self.
I can s- yes, I can say no with uh an awakened. High quality no without becoming defensive or reactionary. I love it, Sandy, that I s- I even sense a little. Similar timber and tenor in your answer and in Mary Hayes' answer and that is um that. Yeah, sometimes just the awareness of self, the awareness of what I'm feeling. Why do I? What do I think about what I'm thinking? What about my response? Yeah, I think all of us walk away from situations. Uh at least those of us who have any sense of consciousness. And we replay things in our mind. We think about things that were said, that were thought, that were felt. And it's a good place to be. Always, always examining. The self is really how we keep the ego in check. Thanks.
Alright, so actually Miss Josephine Walker is on and.
What you mean, Josephine?
Was saying, thank you so much for the lesson, Pastor, but also. Uh the word no means no. Um I say no to a family member, but it does hurt. Uh it can hurt them, but I'm fine now.
It does hurt, doesn't it? It's, I think as, as caring people, we don't want others to hurt. We don't, we don't like to see other people suffer. It's. Difficult. I will say this, um I'll, I'll give you a funny story, not about people, Josephine, but about my dog. So my, my big old giant dog is just laying here at my feet tonight, being a sweet girl. She loves, she loves her dad. Um but a couple days ago, uh Micah and I were in the basement. We have a little. Kind of a little workout room down there and Micah said. What is Lola doing? She just rolling around like a, she's getting, we thought she was just rolling, getting dirty. And so I came out and said, get in here and stop acting like that. You're getting grass all over you. You know, we think our dogs are people. Get in the house. And so she came inside and she came in with like eight yellow jackets on her. Bees all over her. And so Micah and I just started. Taking our hands and just trying to get the, killing the bees and. I'm not a proponent in killing bees, but when there's stinging your dog, it's a different situation. I do love, I do love bees. I know they're necessary. Um but we were just, these bees were just burrowing down into her fur and, and just popping her, stinging her like crazy. So we were trying to get them off of her and um. It hurt me to see her hurt, but probably in some form of her. Um her evolution as an animal, she needs to learn that when she sees bees, not to go stick her face in their hive. That was probably a very painful lesson for her and I didn't want her to hurt. I felt sorry for her that she got stung, ate her, however many times she got stung yesterday. Wh- what is that in our lives? What is it that stings us? What is it? That the lesson is so painful that we don't have to learn it twice? That's a, those are difficult things, aren't they? Yeah, and so. Nobody likes to see someone else hurt. I think when we wanna see someone suffer. That's probably our lower nature. I was uh with a precious cherished friend a couple of weeks ago. And they're going through some real, real difficult challenges and they said to me, I would not wish this on my worst enemy. And all of us have enemies, you know, whether they are perceived or actual real enemies, critics. Uh those who uh try to tear, tear us down. And they just said, I, I just would not wish this on. Yeah, we don't, I think our higher nature doesn't wanna see other people suffer, but sometimes we, we aid in their suffering by rescuing them. From the suffering that they've created. We don't, we, we are not called to fix everyone around us. We are called to love, to be active listeners, to be compassionate, empathetic. But we can't fix everybody else around us. It's just not, it is not what it, it i- it is, not what it is. Thank you, Josephine.
Alright, we will end with the right Reverend John Scott tonight.
Yeah, I was talking about you, my homie. My guru Rishi.
Not sure if he heard. You can text him later. He said, no and yes can be said with love and self-awareness. Both are necessary for our human experience. Know thine own motivation. Ha ha, he said.
I love that. Little so- little Socratic thinking in there. I have to, yeah, I gotta, I've gotta give it up, Guru Scott, that. I've seen you grow into that. I don't know if I'm even at the place where you are with that. It's a, it's a challenge for me to, to come up a little higher as, as you have. Um I think for a season you uh were a little bit less uh able to say no. And maybe even felt some guilt over it. And I've watched you in love, not in reaction, not in defensiveness. I sense it on you. It's a, it's a real beautiful, peaceful presence that your, your yes is yes, your no is no. And they are both very high quality coming from a place of love and of self-awareness. I, I have to say, that's a beautiful place to be. Now you gotta deal with the fact. That I've given you a big old compliment and you, and you gotta deal with this flattery. Now what you gonna do with that guru? What you gonna do with all that, my friend? Love you, buddy. Thanks for joining us and I miss you. I miss you like a fat kid misses cake. Amen, somebody. Alright, thanks for a beautiful discussion tonight. This was amazing. Uh I did wanna give uh some shouts out to some beautiful peoples tonight with us. Uh let's see, joining us on uh, let's see. Oh, thank you for the note from Josephine. Uh yeah. Uh it's a live stream, Facebook and YouTube, Bobby Moore Howard, Cheryl Handy, Pastor Curtis and Esther. Uh Terry Johnson, Dr. Ray Madison, I got a surprise for you. Uh Myrna King, Josephine, Ben and Vicky, call Ben up. Ben and Vicky send me an encouraging text every Monday morning of my life. How precious. Uh Reverend David Michael and John, hope you're feeling better, John. Ivy and Margie, uh Kisa, Pastor uh Gloria and Howard. Jason Jacobs, Laverne Bryant, yay. Uh Elaine Jellybean Jeffries, Rosaline, Lasagna, uh Sandra, Pastor Fred and Mary Cali, Sheila. Wow, Pat, Doreen, Glenna, Tanya, Kansas City, Oprah Winfrey. Uh Lenora, Toria, Richard, Donald, Dinah, Ann, Brandon. Such a wonderful, beautiful family. Reverend John Guru Scott. Scott Fisher, hey Scott Fisher, uh Carla Twine, Victoria Bourdain. Thank you guys for joining us tonight. What a sac-. What a sacred um uh space it is that we share together. I certainly don't take it lightly. Uh we have learned from the teachings of Eckhart Tolle and learn from each other. So we are learning in many different ways. Alright, we're looking forward to seeing you Friday at our uh seven AM devotion and always start with a. Start off with a lot of joy. Sunday morning, we are in person and virtual. Looking forward to gathering. Uh either way that you choose to worship. And before we leave, let's grab our closing affirmation together, commensary. Tonight I am willing, willing and able to recognize dysfunction. If suffering is the normal state of humanity, I do not wish to be normal. If I've created God in my image, I will surrender to the truth that I am made in God's image. I am neither an external physical form nor any um internal thought form. Wow, I'm a spiritual being capable of experiencing physical form and the observing presence. Open to considering a diversity of thoughts. My present thoughts do not reflect my eternal capacity. My potential for awakening to self and spiritual transformation are endless. Let the church say amen, somebody. That was great tonight. What a great teaching, what a great discussion. Have a great rest of your evening. We love you guys. Go in peace.